The Boy Scout Troop 44 and Eric Town scout leader to our meeting tonight. Eric, where are you? Is this like civic duty for coming to observe politics in action?
We're working on our citizenship and the community merit badge. We follow that by citizenship of the nation, citizenship in the world. Those are all requirements to become Eagle Scout.
Terrific. Scouting guys, it's one of the best endeavors you'll find throughout your whole life. Both my boys, I've said it many times before, Eagles, I was involved in scouting. And I know TV's heard it. And I tell the story a million times. I was a big sportsman and a hunter. And I can remember going on my first winter camp out where all you guys slept so nice and you were warm, and I froze. You did you guys more than I did. So it's a great passage of time. Welcome. Anything from the board to the scouts that anyone would like to say?
Glad to see you.
Good luck and stay involved in your community for the rest of your life.
Thanks a lot, guys. Eric, are you here? Where's Eric? It's gonna put him off a little later anyway because we do have a public hearing. Is there any citizens' concerns tonight? Anyone? Then I guess we will head right into, you're gonna be 7:15 for your public hearing. So we'll head into new business. Excuse me for a while. Yes, I have a concern, but it's tied in here with your report, so I just assumed. Wait for Eric. You can do that. Wait for it. Yeah, wait for it. Sure, yes. By new business, we have an appointment. Is Diana Lord here?
Here.
How are you? And Joanne Johnson. So, you know what, Tracy, should we have people walk over to the microphone a little? Are they gonna be heard better there?
Probably.
Probably. So, Joanne, who's chair of the cultural commission?
The chair is not here. Michael Updike is the chair.
Can you kind of push this way a little bit towards that and kind of explain what we're doing?
Sure.
And I think we'd be glad to have you meet Diana.
Stand next to Jen on that side.
Right next to Jen.
We're recording the meeting so we can hear you. Thank you so much.
I'm the treasurer of the cultural council, the Newbury Cultural Council. Kathy Muse is a member.
Kathy, how are you?
And we have, Michael Updike is our chair, but he's not able to be here. And we have, we have members that will be going off in June. And so we would like to continually put new members on so that we have a nice number to work with. So Diana has moved to Byfield recently and is interested in the arts and has good background in organizational skills and financial skills. So we thought we would invite her to join the council right away. We will be having a meeting next Tuesday night to work on all the applications for this coming year.
Thank you so much, Joanne. We have in our packet a pretty good resume of you, Diana, and you've done quite a bit. So it's really, I'm pleased you lived in Newbury, and if I read that right, you were involved in the Firehouse Center.
That's correct.
Were you also involved in Maritime Museum or just the Firehouse?
No, just the Firehouse. I knew the family was over there, but I didn't have anything to do with their business.
All right, well, thank you so much. I think she come highly recommended. I entertain a motion unless, I want to have a motion if we have any discussion afterwards, we can ask Diana.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, any discussion? Got any questions for Diana? None?
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, volunteering.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A request for property use. Town of Newbury Municipal Fire Department, as they have always done, I think, is Christmas tree lighting on the upper green. It's November 29th, 2015. It's a nice event. It's from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. I don't see anyone in the audience, Chris or anyone, so like I said, they have done it before. I would take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Give me a second. Any discussion? I'll say again, the Christmas tree lighting is held on this green, the upper green. It's a, it's a nice event. It takes some time. You'll see a lot of people you know, and if you can attend, it's a nice event. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you just clarify, it starts at 1:00 in the afternoon?
No.
Or is that the setting up?
1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
So it starts at 1:00 in the afternoon?
So that's a 1. That's what this says.
Okay.
If I remember right, it lasts a while.
I think it starts at 4:00.
That's when they're putting up the lights ahead of time?
Yeah. Yeah. Because the kids sing and they're listening.
It's an evening, so.
So it doesn't start at 1:00 p.m.?
No, but it does at 1:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so it starts at 4:00 p.m. You've got that, Alicia, you know that. It starts at about 4:00?
Yeah, around about 4:00, dusk and they light the tree.
Should I put dusk?
Yeah.
Just put dusk?
Well, I mean, maybe we can ask some of the guys to get back to Jen.
Can I get back to you?
Yep, thank you.
So before the night's out, we'll try to get back to you, Jen.
Thank you.
Donald Jarvis, I see here tonight. Donald, why don't you get up and explain a little bit of what you're gonna do once I read Operation Warming Hearts from Donald Jarvis and his address. It's a toy drive on the upper green in partnership with the Newbury Christmas Tree Lighting and Municipal Fire Department. It's gonna be the same date, November 29th, 2015. And you were smart enough to say time to be determined. So why don't you get up and tell us a little bit about what they can do and where they can leave stuff?
All right, so I've been working on starting my own nonprofit to help community-related people who have kind of struggles. So I'm teaming up with the fire department, both Byfield and Newbury. Byfield will be in December. And I'm doing a toy drive to help families in our community who struggle and have a little difficulty during the holiday season. I've also reached out to the Pettingill House to connect families living in hotels down in Salisbury to connect them. And all the school nurses at NES, Raleigh, Salisbury, Triton Middle School, and the high school to kind of get a nice reach of family who are struggling and provide toys to help these families have a good holiday.
Is there anything specific you're looking for as far as types, age range?
When I talked to a few groups, Pettingill and Turning Point, they said there's no general Pacific. Whatever we can get, they can utilize.
Okay.
Now, is there a place you want to have things dropped off?
So I've talked to, I've talked to Chief Walker. We're gonna be having one of the trucks come pull out by the tree, and we're gonna toss all the toys in the truck. And then we're gonna move the truck back to the firehouse for the spaghetti dinner and do the same thing.
Okay, good.
So it's pretty easy.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess we got it.
Well, I have another question.
Oh, go ahead.
So who's gonna, no, I think you're doing, doing this, but with the, so how are you, you're gonna work with the school nurses? Like, how are you gonna just distribute the need?
So I've already talked to all the school nurses. They have my phone number and my email. If they hear a family that's struggling or needs some assistance during the holiday, they're gonna call me. I have a location through Turning Point where I'm storing all the toys I gather. And then as it gets to the holiday, we're gonna disperse them to Pettingill and Turning Point.
Okay, so you're gonna go through those ages for now?
Correct, absolutely.
Great, thank you so much.
Can I just clarify, so the truck is, you want people to bring stuff to the upper green during the Christmas tree lighting?
Absolutely, yep.
Is that what it's gonna happen?
Yep. And then if they can't make those tree lighting, they'll have the same truck at the firehouse for the spaghetti dinner.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just so that everybody in the neighborhood can know, there's also a choice for tots. The Marines do that, and there's a drop-off station here as well.
Question while this is on the table. You said the Byfield?
Yes, we're doing theirs December 19th at the Arts Center.
Okay.
All right. What time is that one, just for the record?
That's being penned out. I'm not gonna say the times in case.
So that happens in the?
So it'll be nighttime probably.
Evening of the night.
Is it gonna be tied to an event, some type of an event?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for doing this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Once again, Donald Jarvis, a Newbury Graves registration officer, as we know, requests to use the upper greens. And it is on Saturday, December 12th, 2015, 11:00 a.m. through Saturday, January 12th, 2016, at 5:00 p.m. for a veteran wreath fundraiser slash ceremony wreath display. You wanna explain a little bit about that too, Don, if you please?
Yeah. Okay, so some of you may have heard, this summer, I spent the entire summer cleaning the cemetery behind me, the First Parish Burial Ground. We have veterans that have served from the Revolutionary War to World War II, just in that cemetery alone. Across the town, it goes from Revolutionary War to the recent conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan. To help prevent the overgrowth situation that was in the First Parish Burial Ground, I am doing a fundraiser, which actually just ended. I'm selling wreaths that are gonna be placed on veteran graves across the town between all five cemeteries. Each wreath sold generated $5 per wreath that came back to me to help maintain these graves. My original goal was 100, it was 50. As of today, I have 146 wreaths, which if you do the math, that's over 600 barrels roughly, which would go towards helping repair, maintain, and buy the medallions for the proper medallion flag holders for these graves. On December 12th, I'm getting seven ceremonial wreaths, one for each branch, plus POWs and Merchant Marines. Through this organization, they ask I do a cemetery honoring the veterans, and then after, place the wreaths on the appropriate graves in town. So that's what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So for the use of public property, can we have a motion?
Closing.
Give me a second.
Please.
Any discussion further? All those in favor?
Aye.
We do have a public hearing.
Chairman, 3:30. The Christmas tree?
Please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. We do have a public hearing tonight. And the public hearing is at 7:15, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing?
Give me a second.
Second.
Give me a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion, why don't we read this motion? Okay? And it'll tell everyone what the motion to the hearing is.
I move that the selectmen, on behalf of the town of Newbury, accept the conveyance of the street known as Livingston Lane located, not that one. Yeah, that's the one you pointed to me.
That's, that's me.
This one. In accordance with Chapter 369, Acts of the 1982, Section 1, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Newbury will hold a public hearing on the determination of the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for fiscal year 2016. Hearing is to be held on Tuesday, November 24th, 2015, at 7:15 at Newbury Town Hall.
You know what? Sorry, but they were more confused than you so it's like.
Throw you right off, huh?
It's my fault. Michelle, do you wanna get up and explain a little bit about what we're doing? And we do this every year, Tracy?
Yes.
But we do this every year, so. All right, thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, we're in support. I'm the principal assessor for the town of Newbury. Tonight we have with us the chairman of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Boyd Kelly. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and Class 5, which is personal property for fiscal year 2016. In deciding the allocation, the selectmen must adopt a residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual property classes according to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 40, Section 56. It is the responsibility of the assessors to provide the selectmen with relevant information and to discuss the fiscal effects of possible alternatives. The total assessed values for fiscal year 2016, there are five different categories of real estate. There's Class 1, which is residential, Class 2, open space, Class 3, commercial, Class 4, industrial, Class 5, personal property. The usage codes are issued in accordance with the Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessment Guidelines. Some salient facts about fiscal year 2016, interim year adjustments. Per the Department of Revenue Guidelines, the assessing cycle requires that all parcels in Newbury exempt and taxable be visited every seven years. Values are to be determined every year. The Department of Revenue recertifies values and audits the operations of the assessor's office every three years. Fiscal year 2014 was a triennial recertification year. Changes to valuation tables in the years in between recertification years are called interim years. Fiscal year 2016 was an interim year. Next year, fiscal year 2017 will be our next revaluation or triennial certification year. So we'll be on an audit next year. The new growth due to construction in single-family home sector increased from last year. The commercial, industrial, and personal property new growth increased over last year due to an increase in personal property accounts and increase in value of personal property utility companies. No change took place in new growth in the commercial area. Below, there's a breakdown of the new growth relevant to FY 2016. You can take a look and see that the residential new growth was $129,478 out of $149,557 total. That represents 87% of new growth in residential and 13% in commercial, industrial, and personal property, a total of 100%. And we do have a little bit of a history on the growth from 2016 going down to 2007, just for your reference, so you can see that history. The total taxable value, the total value for fiscal year 2016 is $1,355,963,77, which is up about 1.05% from fiscal 2015. The overall residential and open space portion of that number is 95.65%. And commercial, industrial, and personal property is 4.35%. Fiscal year 2015 percentages were 95.37% and 4.63% respectively. The tax levy, the levy limit is calculated as follows. We take the fiscal year 2015 levy limit. We add amended growth from Form LA 13A, which we submit to the Department of Revenue every year. We add a 2.5% allowed increase. We add our new growth, and that gives us the total before the debt exclusion and override, which in this case is $14,147,834. The debt exclusion is $741,558. We also had an override of $125,000, and that is a maximum permitted levy of $15,014,392. Our property tax levy limit is $15,979.08, which the difference between those two numbers is the excess levy capacity, and that's $12,212.92. The tax rate is a levy, the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. This is known as a uniform or single tax rate. Under this rate, each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. The tax rate is used in this report as fiscal year 2015 tax rate of $11.52 per thousand. FY 16 tax rate is pending the Department of Revenue's approval. The residential factor adopted by a community governs the percentage of the tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of 1 will result, will result in a taxation of all property at the same rate, also known as a uniform tax rate, a single tax rate. However, the law allows a commercial, industrial, personal property tax rate for the town of Newbury to be as high as 50% above the uniform rate, and residential open space to be as low as 65% of the uniform rate. History of differential tax rates in Newbury. Historically, Newbury has always maintained a single tax rate. Shifting the tax onto the commercial, industrial, and personal properties would create a tax burden for those properties, while the residential properties would only benefit from a small savings. Newbury's total taxable valuation is comprised of 95.65% residential and 4.35% commercial, industrial, personal property. Residential exemption, this one requires a vote. The Board of Selectmen may adopt an exemption of up to 20% to shift the residential class tax burden from lower assessed properties that are the principal residents of a taxpayer to a higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents of a taxpayer. A scenario of the shift is as follows. Without an exemption, FY 16, the single, the average single family here in town is assessed at $414,204. Times the tax rate of $11.52 per thousand gives us the yearly taxes of $4,722. With the 20% exemption, the assessed value after the exemption drops to $331,363. However, the tax rate jumps up to $14.40 per thousand, and actually, the yearly taxes become $4,772, which is actually $50 higher than no exemption. Therefore, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a residential exemption not be adopted. This places an unjustified additional burden to the other residences. And the last part is the classification, which the Board of Selectmen may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. This means the burden cannot be shifted more than 50%. If you turn to page 8, there's a spreadsheet that I put together. And you can see at the top of the spreadsheet, you can see the overall classification and the value for each class of real estate. And you can see the tax shifting from 100% to 110%, 125, 150, and the taxes paid accordingly. If you go to the second half of that spreadsheet, the bottom half, and you go towards the bottom, you can actually see the impact of the tax rate shifting. When you look at the average single-family house, highlighted in red, $414,204 at a tax rate of $11.52, the taxes are $4,772. As the rate goes down by 10%, there's a saving per year of $22 to the average single family. When the rate goes down by 25%, the saving is $54 per year. And at a shift of 50%, the saving of $108 for the average single family per year. However, that burden has to be picked up by the commercial and industrial portion. And for the same value, a commercial property, for example, assessed at $414,204, when you're shifting the tax rate by 10%, the annual taxes go up $477 for that business. If you shift the rate by 125%, the taxes go up by almost $1,200. And at 50%, the taxes, the tax burden goes up by $2,386, which is a big burden on a commercial property. And in light of that information, the Board of Assessors is unanimous in its recommendation to retain the uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2015 with a residential factor of 1, which would make it a single tax rate for the town of Newbury. Selectmen should sign the LA 5. If you approve and vote to allow authorization for town administrator Tracy Lake to sign the LA 5 on the Department of Revenue's state way system on your behalf.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
So I have one, just for clearance sake. In the class as personal property, what is that in reference to just show?
Businesses, the kind of a business, computers, file cabinets, any kind of ceiling fans, refrigerators, if any of the business, all of the, everything that can be removed from inside a business is considered personal property.
Yep. I just figured it was important that it be verified.
The second homes, isn't it?
Second homes as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Contents of a second home.
Not the second home itself?
How assembly.
Right. The real property.
Yes.
Right.
The stuff that can be removed.
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you so much. It was a very, very detailed and very good explanation and presentation, but thank you so much. Would we have a motion from the board?
I move to, to sign the LA?
5.
5 document.
And you vote also, sorry, to vote on our recommendations. Right. And retain the residential factor of 1?
Yes.
And not adopt the 20% residential exemption.
And, all right, so start that again.
I move that we sign the LA 5, adopt the?
Residential factor.
Residential factor of 1.
And not accept?
And not?
Accept. I don't have to do that.
Not accept the?
Residential exemption.
Residential exemption.
Right.
So, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? We're moving right along tonight.
You also have to vote.
I would vote to authorize you sign on our behalf. So I move that we authorize, please, to sign on our behalf, in regards to the matter.
For all those things above.
Yes.
That being so crystal clear, do we have, all those in favor?
I'll, wait a minute. You have two separate votes, two separate votes here?
No, do we need two separate, Tracy?
Yeah, because I made two.
All right, so the vote, start again.
Motion to have Tracy, please, authorize to sign on our behalf on issues here discussed.
All right, that'll be the second one. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, you need a motion for the residential factor of 1.
1.
Not accepting the?
Residential exemption.
Residential exception and signing this form.
No, we are.
All right, so that took care of that. So that second motion, as stated.
As stated.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting this together.
Take it home, it's excellent nighttime reading.
Yeah. Rhythm.
She read it following.
Do we, do we move to close the voting?
The Boy Scout wants to.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks again, guys. We have a one-day letgo license. Did I skip any then?
No.
Protection Fire Company, Eric's not here yet, right? Protection Fire Company Number 2, Saturday, November 28th, Miami's Hall, through Morgan Ave, for a family party from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I didn't keep them up.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in order? Sure, look that way.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one, Tracy, are you gonna do a little bit of explaining on this to us even though we've read it? This is that we need a vote to adopt the two investment policy statements?
Yep.
And those have probably been in place for a long time, right?
The actual written documents do not exist.
So we're creating?
But we've been operating under these premises since I've been here. Part of the community compact that we're going to be executing with Lieutenant Governor asks that we put our policies, as a best practice, that we put our policies all in writing, so these are the first two that we're gonna be asking the Board to adopt relative to investments and other post-employer benefits.
So we've been operating this way, just formalizing the documents by?
In writing.
And actually, because of some of the upcoming issues. Now, question, let's make a motion.
Motion to approve the documents.
Wait a second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Alicia, do you have any questions?
I think this is also very good bedtime reading. But that's, that's how I feel about investments. How quickly do we need to get this done? I wasn't sure if Chuck or JR, it seems like a large thing to digest with only a portion of the board. I wasn't sure if it's pressing that we have this done sort of right today, or when we would review it if we do it now and there are questions about?
You possibly adopted it at your next meeting, your meeting on the 8th, and Lieutenant Governor's gonna be here on the 17th. It would be nice to say we've already?
Completed it by?
We've begun implementation of some of the compact as well.
I mean, it may not be necessary to have a vote, I just thought.
Well, can you talk a little bit about, about what best practices we can is going to be implemented? going to be implemented?
Well, we're starting with the investment policy of the post-employment benefits. We're going to be looking at, from, from finance perspective, that's where we're beginning all of our financial best practices, utilization of reserves, cash, stabilization, how we want to spend it, how much we want to have liquid, that's covered also in the investment policy. Our debt policies, we want to establish debt policies.
So we read this on the front side about investment strategies and the credit strategies and all those things. They were pretty, pretty strategic and pretty thorough.
And are also all of the lines of Massachusetts through the list.
The post-benefit employment benefits, so those would be all of the employees of the town?
The benefits.
And that would be what Triton's health plan too?
We're, we're creating our own policies. The district would create their policies relative to...
And Triton's open to funding their health plan. They, they fund their own retirement, right?
As we, yes.
And it's the health plan that even at Triton is unfunded, right?
That's the unfunded liability, the benefits that as a retired employee, we're responsible for, for paying.
So, just to be clear, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly, we're not changing anything the way we do anything, we're just putting it in writing.
We've changed a lot over the last five years.
Tracy, we're making a payment for this now.
We're changing, we've changed a lot of the way we operate relative to the finance department. Other functions of town government are going to be asked to look into best practices as well. Now we're just documenting.
Okay.
What have you been writing and asking the Board to adopt as, as official policies?
Post-employment benefits, is there any way anyone can ever catch up?
Absolutely. It was fully funded over the years.
Okay, it's up to the board to eat the table if you would like, and I don't care what the other guys.
Well, I would like to see it gets done.
Tonight. And I think it's rather, yeah, I think it's tonight, too.
I hadn't...
Realized it was that complicated, yeah?
Yeah, when I started reading through it, I was like, oh, so I should give myself a lot more time to read all this.
Because we get more coming.
And, you know, I guess because no one's here to speak to it, they're not concerned about it, so.
I don't think it's really going to affect anybody in town, really. I think it's, it is what it is, and it's not, nothing significant is changing unless it's a issue, correct?
Correct.
No. And this is just a document that we're getting right, and so that now when somebody says, what do you do, we can say, oh, there you go, correct?
So that as people leave, there'll be policy documents that they can understand and use a number of time.
And that's actually worth a lot, because being on a plane and doing things, when you're crafting certain bylaws and things, you try to leave them as open, as little as possible for personal interpretation of people coming in.
Yep.
So this is, I think, really good. So I would have to take...
And other cities and towns do this too, we can do this.
I think they are.
Do we want to look at yourself? Discussion, all those ready to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much, Tracy. Eric isn't coming yet.
I'll just send him to us.
Yeah.
All right, you did.
Should he say anything? He might not have got it.
He might be in traffic.
And if he is, we'll discuss some of what's going on and fill out probably a little bit of what he's going to do. All right, so old business, before we go on to some of your bullets, I'm going to discuss something, the full board's not here, but I'm just going to discuss something with the full board for the sake of information as old business. Board of Health, I believe, tonight and Tracy, didn't they talk about it the meeting before? I think tonight's meeting, they talked about...
Yes.
Board of Health has been talking about instituting a three-hundred-dollar fine for littering town-wide, and that's the Board of Health. And they've asked us, and we can wait till the full board's here, but they've asked us for a vote of confidence, or is there anything about that that we don't like? So maybe we'll make a motion for vote of confidence for the Board of Health for raising the, and then we can discuss it. So...
Motion to give the Board of Health a vote of confidence for the raise of the littering fine from one hundred dollars to three hundred dollars.
Sorry.
All right, now we have a second in front of us, now let's discuss it. Alicia?
Did they provide any kind of written judgments on how they want the law to read?
That will be forthcoming, and I think that will be part of what they craft. And, and a good question is, at least for me, I'm not even positive what the littering fine is now in our town.
Hundred dollars, isn't it?
That's what I recall.
So, I mean, just for the audience and everyone out there, it's going to be a substantial I think it was not just focused on Palm Island, it's probably focused, you know, maybe some of the intent came from some of the problems on Palm Island, but certainly I think it's fair that the whole town should be very conscious about littering. We have, you know, Route One that goes right through our town, and Ninety-Five splits our town, and, and we've got a lot of different places where people could be littering, so I think it's, uh, it's not a bad thing. Anything else that you guys have thinking about?
Do you know if it's an up to, or is it a set fine?
I think it's set, from what I heard. So Tracy, I also heard the same thing.
Is that meaning if it's a...
Bang.
Yes, three hundred dollars, whether it's a couch, or whether it's...
A cigarette.
Cigarette, or gum wrapper.
And do you know, having not seen the laws or what they're proposing, but do you know if they, who would be an arbiter, you know, you get a speeding, if you can go to a judge and say, you know, my wife is having a baby, and I, I feel like, I don't usually speed, please give me a break here?
Well, you don't give that. Good questions, should we take it? Steve, you see it, Michael.
Littering is a bylaw violation, and disputes for bylaw violations go to the district court. They, whoever gets a ticket for littering can dispute it at the district court, not very magistrate.
And who shows up, the town?
The officer that goes with the ticket and the person that got it.
So the police department is the one who enforces town bylaws?
Yes, any officer that enforces, that can enforce a littering bylaw as well, if they issue that citation and it's contested, that the person who issued the citation can show up at court.
Okay. So how is this, how is this, how does this relate to dog waste? Is that considered littering?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's a good question. Let's take that a little further.
Please do.
Is, when the dog goes to the bathroom, and the dog runs away and the owner doesn't see it, is that considered a three-hundred-dollar offense? Or is it when the, oh, is it when the dog owner puts it in the bag?
That could be a violation of the pooper-scooper law. But the problem is, a lot of people comply with the pooper-scooper law and pick up the dog waste, and they put it in the plastic bags, and on their way off the beach or wherever they're walking the dog, just discard it on the ground in a pot. That's littering. So there are two separate violations there. You leave the, the waste alone and don't take care of the dog's waste, that's the pooper-scooper law.
Which is what? What's the...
I think it's twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, something like that. It may have gone up, I haven't seen the, the citation in a while, because most people carry the plastic bags and scoop, so fortunately for us, we don't get many violations of that. However, the littering, once it's in the bag, now you have the biohazard of the dog waste, along with the non-biodegradable plastic bag, just littering wherever they're dumping it. So we're having a real problem on, on island right now with the dogs on the beach and the people walking the dogs on the beach, but it's a year-round thing. So, and any community has that.
Mike, you're right up to speed, I guess that's why you're the chief, right?
Mike, you would have to know what other surrounding towns fines are from...
I don't, I can research that.
Another question that came up as this panel was discussed, should we take and maybe make a motion for confidence in, in theory with what's going on, wait for a little bit more of what we hear?
I don't want to take a vote of confidence until Chuck and J R. are here.
All right.
Personally, me.
You can do that, but I mean, what we're doing is maybe, what we're after is, do we think that, as the Board of Selectmen's sitting here, do we think the fines too much? Do we want to...
Three hundred dollars.
Yep.
Not if you don't litter, costs you nothing.
Yeah, so I mean, what we're saying is, we, we would like to see more about the law itself, for us. I mean, remember, the Board of Health has the ability to do this.
Right, and that's fine.
Right, Tracy, as I understand, they have the ability right now not even come and ask us, they can do this.
Yeah, which is fine, but I, I, enforcement's an issue for me. I mean, you can make the fine a thousand dollars, but if nobody's able to enforce it, it's...
It, it's, it's an issue. We try to have high visibility in Palm Island Center where the bulk of the, the dog waste is ending up, and while the police officer is there, no one litters. As soon as a police officer drives away, people litter. So, I mean, unless you're there and you're catching them in the act, it's, it's difficult. You know, out on the highway, it's real easy to see when people throw things out of their car window, but people walking off the beach, they may keep it in their car until they drive out of sight of the police officer, then it goes out the window of their car. We've, we've seen that too, so, I mean, it's, it's very difficult.
So how many of these, do you know how often you're citing, citing people for litter currently?
Every time we see it.
Exactly.
I, I don't have those statistics with me, like...
I wasn't sure if you had a sense of, you'd like, if you hand out a couple of months, a couple of weeks, sometimes in the high, just a couple a week.
Yeah, it, it depends. I mean, this time of year when the beach opens up to the dogs, we get an influx of it with, until people realize, hey, they're out there enforcing it, we'll take our, our dog waste with us, and then it slows down, but, you know, it, it, it all depends, it's, it depends on the volume of people on the beach and volume of dogs.
Yeah, I guess my, my biggest concern is about, you know, if, if one of our boy scouts accidentally throws his gum wrapper, is he going to be before a judge with a three-hundred-dollar fine?
The, the police officers have a lot of discretion for that, and I don't think it goes to that extent. A lot of times, the police officer will just ask the person, hey, please pick that up, throw it in the trash barrel, or bring it with you, depending upon where they are, and that ends it. I mean, we're not so set in stone that we write everybody every, everything we see. If people are cooperating with us, you know, our police officers, exercising their discretion.
We could, for the sake of discussion, and what Alicia said, wanting to hear from Chuck and J R., too, we could table this to the next meeting.
There's no rush, this won't be...
No, and we're not, we're not, we're not voting on this, I think the Board of Health was just seeking information as to how we felt tonight. So that was just a request that Steve had suddenly been thinking about their needs, and asking if I could call the board. So, I mean, let's, let's do this, we have three people here. Do we think that three hundred, does anyone think that three hundred dollars is too much, or it should be two hundred dollars if you do that a hundred?
I can't answer that question, because I think, I mean, I think three hundred dollars is steep, but that's me, and I don't really litter, so I'd like to see what the surrounding communities are doing, like to get a little more information and, you know. I don't have enough information to answer to give you tonight.
Where are you, Dana?
It also seems pretty steep, but it's, I kind of want to look at it in the context of solving some of the Senator Island issues, which we're performing, I would like to do, and...
But this isn't just Palm Island, this is for the whole town.
I know, but it's, it's a part, to me, this has come up as a part of that, and I think it needs, needs to be viewed in that context, and, you know, I, I think given the discretion the chief has spoken of with the enforcing officers, I don't think it's going to be used as a punitive measure against citizens. And if we get it, get people to stop littering, then we could make it a thousand-dollar fine if that was what it took, but, you know. So I guess, I, I think it's steep, but that may be what's required for me.
What's needed, it may be what's needed.
People can authorize and, and say it's not okay.
I just don't, I just don't have enough information tonight, so...
For myself, I probably need to read the littering bylaw a little more intensively. I think it might be, it could be better said as a stepped bylaw. If it's a hundred and fifty now, maybe a second whack should be a three hundred dollar hit, so, I mean, that's just food for thought.
That's, you know, that's up to the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen to set that.
Meaning that, you know, you certainly, if a guy litters once and gets caught and happens to litter again, and he's figuring, I, you know, a hundred bucks, what the hell, or...
Heavy fines are a deterrent, but I think it was Selectman Brecko said, if we're not out there to enforce it, or we don't see it, it could be a million dollars, but, you know, the threat of a heavy fine is definitely a deterrent, so...
Now, anyone from the audience, any one of the adults up front, and then, any of you guys?
The boy scouts, the boy scouts.
Let me get to it, I would have got to it. Now, would any of the people that are the boy scouts in the back like to speak?
I'm just curious, wouldn't it be cheaper to just let your dog go down on the beach?
Well, Mike can explain that, because he's good at it. We have, we have rules and regulations for that too, but go ahead, Mike.
Um, the, the dog waste on the beach, nothing worse than walking on the beach with your bare feet and stepping on dog waste. So, I, those laws have been in place for a long time, and it's unsanitary, it's unhealthy.
No, I know, I know.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, would it be easier if the dog went to the bathroom and the ocean washed it away? I don't know, I'm, I'm not prejudiced, and I'm not one of those.
I think her point is, why won't, why wouldn't you make them both the same steep fine?
Yeah.
So one isn't inclined to do one over the other, because what she's saying is, why take it up if it's only twenty-five bucks to me?
I, I have no objection to any of that, I, we only enforce the regulation. The Board of Health wants to set all the regulations at that? I have zero complaints with that. I think a, a, a steep fine is a deterrent, and, you know, it does make sense if we're fining for throwing the litter away, but we're not, it's two hundred seventy-five dollars cheaper to just let the dog go on the beach and walk away from it.
I mean, sometimes what occurs is people are trying to vision for being able to make conditions acceptable. During the summer, there are actually no dogs on the beach, right, Mike?
Yes.
Are they on the beach after five o'clock? Can they walk out there on leashes after that? I can't remember.
Uh, there are no dogs allowed at any time in the summer.
At any time on the beach. So supposedly that guides the beach against, you know, dogs with, with the kids and young, you know, eating their sandwiches and playing with dog poop at the same time, but some of those, the pooper laws also spread to, you know, ball fields and other things.
That's what we would have a major issue.
So that's where the pooper-scooper bylaws were maybe focused more at was the ball fields. There's no easy answer. It's really hard, even if you had a pooper-scooper bylaw, for a dog owner to always know what's going on, too, it's just hard.
Especially with no leash law on town. The dog runs two hundred yards ahead of the owner. You don't know what the dogs, you want to take it up there, and then, you know, how do you know that?
But even though there's no leash law, you should, the dog should be under control at all times, correct? The area would...
In a perfect world, in a perfect world, I, I, I have to take in the distinction between some of the pooper, pooper-scooper laws, especially to do with Palm Island, probably don't blend right into the three-hundred-dollar littering law that we're thinking about, or that the Board of Health is thinking about. And I think it's fair to say that we as a board should probably table it to, we have a full board, and we have enough questions that, but we have to also understand that the Board of Health, you know, probably doesn't need us in this, but I'm certainly sure they're looking for our input, so...
Yeah, so here's the town bylaw on, on disposal of waste, the pooper-scooper law. First offense, fifteen dollars, second offense, twenty-five dollars, and third offense, fifty dollars.
Yeah, I knew it was small fines, so...
And I think part of that is, certainly, the police probably aren't totally running around in their dress shoes out on the beach looking for dogs doing the bathroom. And like I said, it's more focused for the ball fields. But that being said, I think we have enough, and we spent enough time tonight, can I have a motion to, to table this discussion? Do we have a full board, which is the next meeting?
Motion to table to the next meeting.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Okay, Julie, you here tonight? No, yes?
She's not.
She's not. This seemed pretty simple, right? Wasn't it just the fact they wanted to change the date? So as I read this, the Fuel Training Studio from Seventy-Five Mary Max Street, Newburyport, they came, was it last meeting or the meeting before, last meeting, two meetings ago? they came, was it last meeting or the meeting before, last meeting, two meetings ago, for their half marathon race would like a change of date, and they'd probably like a vote from us. And that would be from Sunday, June twelfth, two thousand sixteen, to May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, from nine fifteen AM to one PM. So I would entertain a motion. Did any of our police or anyone else have a Michael, any problem with that?
Deputy Chief Lucy always deals with that on an annual basis, and it's not an issue, so...
Everything signed off, and, right, so, that being said, um...
Motion to approve the change of date?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussions?
I think it would be a lot better for the runners.
Oh, you mean because of heat?
Yeah. I don't know if that's why they changed it, but I'd much rather run a half marathon in May than in June.
Yeah, you're probably right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I guess this is asking for a vote tonight, but certainly we can discuss it. Is the change of venue for the four twenty-six fifteen annual town meeting from Newbury Elementary School gym to the Triton High School auditorium? So...
Did we talk to TRI about that?
Yep, it is currently available for our, the date of our annual town meeting, April twenty-sixth. Holds eight hundred and fifty people, there's parking available for four hundred and twenty cars. There is no room rental fee, but we do have to pay janitorial overtime in the amount of thirty dollars per hour for each hour after ten PM. And we also would be responsible for paying for the technical support, which would be thirty dollars an hour throughout the course of the meeting.
Do we pay the janitorial thing down for the Newbury Elementary School?
I understand there was a fee assessed to us previously, but it has not been assessed to us this past year.
Maybe it gets assessed when we use the auditorium because it shares, or something. Let's make a motion, then we'll discuss it. Do we have a motion?
It's a motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Now, can we, we either bring up some of the discussion we had before about rates, or do you have anything else that you'd like to issue?
Well, one of the things that came up, well, first off, I'd wanna know how many the auditorium and the elementary holds, and how that compares to the stage where we were at as well, as far as just the straight comparison of numbers to numbers. Also, one of the things that came up during the coffee hour is that people felt like, at least two residents came to the coffee hour, felt that, uh, the FinCon Selectmen and other folks who were up on stage were intimidating, uh, by being raised above to talk to us during a meeting. So since we're discussing this, I'm bringing up that perspective.
Then we will be on stage the next, if we remove it, everybody's gonna be on stage.
And, and they felt that being a little higher than, were there, so you guys vote?
No, I didn't go, was it one of the people we're talking? No, Shari, I must have done it by my own. I mean, Damon, when did you meet these people?
The coffee hour, this Saturday, last Saturday.
Oh, so you had one? How many people came?
How about seventeen?
Oh, good.
All right, and their thoughts were, because we're elevated, that we're really not, like, integrated on the same, you know, more accessible kind of, when people walk up, they have to look up to us? You know what? Now, Tracy, is this date, four twenty-six fifteen, the date of the annual town meeting, when we're gonna be voting for the police invite?
Yes.
My thought is, since we're in the level of discussion, I wouldn't change anything. It's further away for some people that might be on Palm Island, or Old Town, and we're looking probably for, I think, as much consistency as we've always had in-town government for something as important as the, uh, the Police and Town Hall, which we had before us at that time, our police fire, police and town hall. So that's a very important time, and that's just my thought in the shape of discussion.
And the annual town meeting is in the gymnasium, where we're not on the stage.
The annual what is in the spring?
Right, spring, is in the gymnasium.
So that's where everyone likes us better, right?
And that's where we, we pay a fee if it's assessed to us, and the auditorium is not.
You know something? It's up to you guys, we can table it for a full board. Alicia, have you got anything else you're thinking? I mean, I don't know if I'm willing to give up the consistency after hearing what JR said too, at least for this town meeting. I don't know if I wanna disprove anything anyways.
JR or Damon?
Damon, what's your, I'm tired tonight with Damon just said.
They're both Damon now.
I'm doing the same thing.
That's all right, it's a little further down, you're too far away. So, but anyway, for me, that's what kinda bothers me on this day. And the thing we're trying to gain is the fact that it's gonna be more accessible for, for everyone in the audience. The thing we're trying to gain out of this is it's gonna be much clearer, easier to televise for the people that are trying to watch town meeting at home. Sorry, sometimes we know and we don't tell you guys out there, so...
The media committee has asked, um, if the town would consider moving the venue of the annual town meeting to the Triton Auditorium for acoustical reasons. Because when they provide the, everybody, the speakers and the microphone at Newbury Elementary School, it's not really built for that, and you get feedback, and it doesn't present well on TV. So the media committee asked the Board of Selectmen if we would think about moving the venue to the auditorium where it's better filmed, better filmed, better acoustic. They're very quick to be a deal.
And what you might not have understood when Damon, JR, when Damon had his coffee hour at Town Hall, there were quite a few residents that talked to him about a myriad of things, and at least two. And I almost can sense that that might be intimidating, didn't I, did not like when the Finance Committee, Town Council, Town Administrator, and Board of Selectmen sat on an elevated, uh, stage looking out into the auditorium, even though the auditorium was like this, when people had to come up the street, they're always looking out. Now, the auditorium is a basketball, we're all on the same, same level, same floor, so, um... Interesting. For me, like I said, the town of Newbury is always willing to accept change. They, they adapt very easily to change, so, so, I'm not, I'm, I'm not really ready to change anything for one of the most important town meetings we've gonna probably have, so... That's my thought, so anyway, do you guys wanna pass on this, or do you want...
I don't wanna do anything without JR.
So then make a motion to table it.
Motion to table?
Second.
Uh, and we've had a lot of discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just got a text from Eric.
Yeah.
No, he's not gonna make it. So unfortunately, no, would like to bring up the Regional Dispatch, which keeps coming up, and, and the idea of doing one project at a time. And he also feels that the coffee hour was a very productive way to reach out to residents.
Okay, so, do you wanna speak a little on what you're gonna speak about? Uh, do you want me to start it off a little bit about the Municipal Building Committee and what they're doing, so it makes it a little easier for you?
Yes, please.
All right, Municipal Building Committee, and I'll probably pass some to Damon too, because he knows that the last one has been charged by our board. And that's one of the things I'd like to make kind of very, very, uh, known at this point. Our board made a vote for the Municipal Building, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, to move in the direction of a new building for the Police and Town Hall on this location.
That's not, that's perfectly accurate. What we asked them to do was to provide better information so that a new new building here could be compared with the previous Plan A, and with a new new building here that would have the ability to support an attached fire station in the future.
Now, that's the motion we voted on?
Yeah.
And then, it's my understanding that the Municipal Building Committee was gonna come here with the original plans that we, that have failed twice, with the new new plans for the police and the fire, I mean, the police and the town hall here. And then a third option, which is the police and a, and a town hall with the ability to, uh, Lego, for lack of a better word, on the needs, for the needs of the fire company. That was my understanding.
All right, so, so the difference in, in what I said was the fact that the Town Hall and police could also, the only difference is gonna be that we would hold it in comparison to what we were gonna do with the police and fire?
Yeah, so they're, they're getting the numbers.
And the design.
And the design, to the point that they can design such as program design, not design, broken design.
That's what's bothering me. You mean what we already had anyway?
Yeah. Program layout and costs, so that we can compare the, the three different options that we have on this site, um, and look at it, so, you know, compare the police fires renovation to Town Hall, what does that assess out to for the residents? What does new police, new Town Hall assess out? What's a new police, new Town Hall with a essentially oversized support system for heat, cooling, et cetera? How do those three options vet out economically, so we can bring that through?
Yeah, if Eric were here, he might fine tune those, because I think we're gonna get up and maybe speak about some things, and we'll entertain those with full faith. But I guess what I wanted the people in the audience to know, and on television, is that the Municipal Building Committee had a charge, because we had a very long Saturday meeting, and we moved from some of the plans we had before to those plans. And we've started to hear about a lot more plans that might be better, might be worse. And our board charged the Municipal Building Committee towards moving in those directions, which makes it hard for them with, with what they have ahead of them to change that direction until at least the vote in the spring. So I wanted to kinda reaffirm that tonight, and I don't know if you wanna add to that, or, like, you have any problems with what I said?
No, I, I essentially said after the last Municipal Building Committee that for radical changes to the plan, people would have to bring that to us, and then we could bring it to the Municipal Building Committee, because they are not currently looking at different sites. They're not looking at, you know, uh, re-envisioning.
Well, I understand that that work's already been done. Why would they continue to look at things that they've already looked at?
Well, I think what, what it is after going through a lot of things, that this board made the decision that we'd kind of have to at least tie it down to the things you guys kinda corrected me upon, but it's at least those, like, three very closely tied in a bundle options that can be dealt with as a paradigm to go forward to solve a problem. Otherwise, they might as well not even meet.
Yeah.
So, and at least to the vote in the spring.
Yes, we're aiming towards a vote in the spring, and the people...
The vote what in the spring? The project, right?
Yes, to vote through the project. And, you know, the idea, for instance, of Regional Dispatch keeps coming up, just build a police station somewhere. People bring that idea forward, you know, the police station is the, the burning, pressing need. And they have dealt, the use of, has vetted that idea. The police chief has spoken regularly to that idea. And while it has been resolved for many of us, as to why we're not moving in that direction, we haven't always, that hasn't reached all of our residents.
What corner is the Town Hall?
It's one four.
And one thing is that I think the board made the decision that as leaders, we have to move forward in at least a relevant and pertinent and singular direction because not only is Town Hall very non-compliant, but the police station obviously can't continue to go forward in such a way as we were going forward. And we brought sewers to the area, and it has a lot of clusters, so that's the direction we went in. Now, I just wanted to somewhat reaffirm that with, with the board in case there was anything that was different from what I felt we, we were talking about. You see, Alicia, see anything different then? So, go ahead. Now, you'll have to introduce yourself, because I'm not positive.
Can I, can I open it?
My name is Jim Moran. And the first statement I wanted to make is I, I felt that the town had a very good plan early this year, the voters, to develop the properties on Morgan Street. I think most everybody thought that was the best way to go, oh, we've never been, perhaps the voters. That vote effectively, uh, was, was a one percent difference. It was a forty-nine to fifty-one vote, very close, but it was voted down. A lot of feedback has been heard since that time, that they didn't, the voters didn't feel they really understood what they were voting on. So, my question is to the few that, first, I'd like to think the board would keep open options, that that'd still be on the table. Even though the MBC might not be working on that right now, certainly I wouldn't wanna think would throw away a good plan, say, let's keep that as an option.
And that's what we've done.
And, and remember, they kinda corrected me, so that's still floating as a backdrop within their, their charge.
Second, I wonder if you could update me as to, what I think is really critical is the property that the fire company to own, and where the board might be right now to secure that property.
I don't think, uh, and I'll ask Damon, because he was at the meeting, and maybe Tracy has a little more information, but I don't think right now we have done since that Saturday, and I could be wrong, but since the Saturday when we heard so, I guess for lack of a better word, didactically from the folks in the audience that they did not want to build the fire station at this time. That, I don't know if there was, did we continue to pursue at a high level?
We, we have an offer made to them, but they have not accepted it. They, they did accept at one point in time, and we had an agreement that should the vote be affirmative, that they would agree to sell us their property.
The vote for the police fire?
For the police fire. So obviously that option is not available. There was a subsequent offer made to them, um, but they have not accepted.
And Jim, the reason that, and once again, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, it was two votes, and we felt that two votes was two votes. You know, how everyone was speaking, that the people have spoken, and that we'd be very arrogant to continue down that same path. And I mean, there were some people that thought maybe we should, because other communities bring up what municipal leaders sometimes think is prudent visioning. They bring it up ten times.
I, I agree. I, I don't think the voters say, no implies should be the end. Maybe they have to say no ten times. In any case, what I've heard is it's still an option on the table, and we'll move ahead with that option.
I think it's just a sit, but not... So I, I think what, I think what it is, is if Damon and Alicia explained it to me right, it's still a backdrop into visioning what we put forward as a proposal.
If in fact, in the future, that comes from the vote, it's really critical that the town secure the property. So the question would be, if there's better offer to them, is your timeframe established, or is the rent going to respond?
No.
Not right at this time.
That probably would wanna exit the board.
Well, go ahead. I think, well...
We'll be qualified in saying, obviously, we get Thanksgiving, Christmas, so it's, it's a little crazy time. But I would certainly think time is always of the essence, and to have a little agenda. As important as this is, should have some point included. Now, that being said, moving on to where we are right now with the NBC is, this is the path we're taking. And the way I look at this, uh, this is a good plan, this will work. The real question is, is it the best plan? I'm falling back onto what I consider a master plan for Morgan Avenue. Does the board really have a master plan for Morgan Avenue town meeting? Town offices, police department, and ultimately the fire department. Again, it comes to ownership of that land before you can do that challenge. The way I see it is, we all know it's important to you. First, we have a master plan, we figure out the cost of that. We figure out the cost of that. And then we figure out the schedule, the duration to implement that plan. And if that's done, then present it to the townspeople. And anybody knows what the plan is, whether effectively happens or not, that ultimately will be up to the town voters. And if you put a plan together and said, you want to do this in phases or stages? Phase one, phase one might be new town hall and police department, right here we're standing. Phase two, I think a year or two later, might be renovations to the existing fire department. And phase three might be conversion of the rest of the property there to parking spaces, which is common everywhere. So I'm advocating a clear plan ahead. Right now, I understand what the directions of select is. Okay, and we're ultimately going to have to take that and turn that to the voters clearly so they know what it is. But is it time to stop and say, hey, what really is of the best interest of the town? Which I think you did earlier this year. And what would it take us to rethink this?
To look forward. I will say this, like Alicia did say to you, the original plan, as I'm sure you knew, the original plan was everything you said. That was police, Town Hall, and Fire. If we could have cloned about 300 of you back then, we'd be a hell of a lot further along.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the original report 16 months ago gave you two options, option one, option two. Option two was just what the president pursued. Several months after that was initiated, then the fire company said, hey, listen, we'll sell our property. At that point, it was a no brainer.
But Tracy, though, the very original concept we once had at one point included everything, right? Am I wrong? Wasn't that the original vision?
It was a police fire station with renovation to Town Hall.
Right. It involved everything.
So that must have been prior to the CSS report?
Yep.
Understanding that is-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant what went to town, meaning?
No, the original. We all thought about everything. We were all very highly invested in. A lot of us really got very thoughtful about the fact that New Breed has limited water and really doesn't have sewer. And we felt we've made this not only a central location and we felt as we met in the library in Byfield that the synergy of Town Hall, police, and fire on one location was very relevant to town government. And we also thought that having water and sewer in one location was very valuable.
I have to embrace that degree. And I believe the board still agrees that's still of best interest. Frustration is the implementation of that with the voters. I just, all that deep doing that would repeat myself. And I think I presented clearly what's on my mind.
Well, it's my hope, it's my hope that when the municipal building committee comes forward with a cost and a plan of what's just the needs of the this, the Town Hall and the police department, and we have something to compare it to, to the original plan, I'm hoping that'll shed more light on what is the best direction for town government to go. That's my opinion.
Again, I think that's a good plan, but I think it's incomplete because a part of the equation that's missing is the fire.
Yeah, but that's in the first, the first plan.
No, I-
And we're still looking at that.
No. We're getting confused as to what's first and third. And I think if, the best way to do this, in my mind, is you use the CSS report, which is a find-all, I think, that was put out, it's published, anybody can read it. Say, this is the baseline to start from. And this is what we did. We've gone from that, we've gone to a full-blown development of Morgan Avenue. And now we're back to where we were a year ago at this time. With the development just of these two facilities.
I think. And Tracy and the board. I think it was driven a lot by cost. And a lot of our thinking was cluttered with the fact that the relationships of our fire department are very crystal clear. And it's always been very easy to understand some of those things. So I think it was cost and kind of getting through some of those ideologies that at least at the Saturday meeting with a lot of people here, the board, and I'm glad that my board told me a little different, that we were even smarter than I thought we were. We kind of moved towards trying to put something together that got as much done, with maybe a sewer hooked up potentially, that as much done as possible for a lower price because it seemed that the fire station was a little bit of a sticking point and that the cost was too high for our town. So we took that very, very strong jaundice eye and the five members of our board made that vote that day.
It would appear that, I don't think anything's changed since that CSS report. It needed some refinements. But that basically says, says with option two that you're moving heavily, that it's a $7 million bill to do versus an $11 million bill for the whole development. So Eric, obviously, has got more detail. And I'm sure things have changed a little. But I think that was a pretty detailed report. And I'm not so sure they're going to change. They had escalated those numbers either through December or the spring of 16. There are some considerations with the new building. It is important, you'd understand elevation-wise, the Town Hall first floor would be different elevation than the police department first floor.
I think it depends on the building.
No, I'm saying, so as you walk in from Bray to the new Town Hall, to get into the police department, you've got to get down five feet. So there's a difference in elevation between, so your elevator looks like it's going to have five slums in the basement. First floor, police department, the first floor, this building, the second floor, the police department, the second floor, this building. In all fairness to Eric, I'm sure he probably has the answers to some of what I've written.
My thought was Eric is certainly spending some time with you too.
Right. But I don't think it's important, but the particular is on option two as much as what I consider is the importance of keeping the option open to the future development on Morgan Avenue.
Well, I think especially the two members on both sides and he articulated that tremendously. And I think if the full board was here, they'd all feel the same way, wouldn't they? So.
Definitely be alone.
I feel pretty strongly. I've listened to, been attending many meetings. I've listened to people in the audience. And the common message that keeps coming up is that they never felt the voters really understood the vote, that turned it down to begin with. And I think there's a lot of frustration. So if you can re-flaunt the vote, really put an effort into getting to the general public so they understand that. And all the difference in the vote was 18 people. That was the vote. So you're really not-
18 and 19. But you know, you've had a very good presentation. It's been helpful. What's pushing us along too is the fact that because it takes New Breed, like I mentioned before, they accept change so easy and they're very quick to adapt. It's taken us so long to at least get to a point. Mike downstairs. Mike, can you speak to some of the changes? But they're just going to hopefully get us by for to this point, right?
We've done a lot of remediations that the Department of Public Health has recommended. As far as air scrubbers downstairs and, you know, obviously Tracy and the board, the board of health, we've done a tremendous amount of work hooking up to the water and sewers and getting us off the faulty septic. So that has helped. But there were 21 specific recommendations by Department of Public Health and with churn institute all of them. And a lot of them are fairly easy fixes. Some of them are more intense. But we've tried, we're trying to implement all of them. Hopefully, the health situation downstairs will alleviate somewhat with the, with the recommendations we've implemented. All of the space situation, the functionality will remain the same. But at least it will be more healthy environment for my offices, so.
Well, we've got some people that aren't feeling well. And doesn't historically winter close things down even more because of snow and moisture and so, I mean?
I'm hoping with the air exchanges that we've installed, that will alleviate that problem. So, see what happens.
So as you can see, we're, we're like pushed by not only putting something before the voters that at least they think is a good idea. And that was a pretty representative meeting we had on Saturday. And we're also really getting caught on time.
There's been many years that have gone by. Rush to judgment as you get to the finish line. I'm not so sure it's the best thing. And I really feel we'd be doing the town a disservice. And I could get to the bottom and be able to tell the general public what's happening with the property. Either it's a go or it's a no-go. But to be in limbo and not know isn't good feedback, right?
Right now, it's a no-go, right?
Yeah, right now, right now, there isn't a lot of limbo. It's a no-go, but.
Well, that's not what I understand from what I've heard. An offer you made hasn't been responded to, which-
No, at least it's fine.
Yes, well, hold it, hold it a second.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we take 30 seconds so I can get my kids out?
Oh, sure.
Before we do that, can I just ask one question?
Yep.
Who is this gentleman speaking? Is he John Q. Public or is he representing somebody or?
No, I'm John Q. Public.
Okay. Okay, great. Right, guys, so see, this is an opportunity for this gentleman who lives in town and cares about the outcome to come here and hold these folks accountable and give his say in what he thinks.
And one thing is, guys, that's, that's one of the ways we kind of move around to say more to select and committees. We're always very open for that type of interchange. Because you know what? You're always going to learn something. Thanks, guys. Thank you for having us. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have not got any negotiation.
Good, all right. Thanks. Okay.
And I think that's good.
Thank you, guys. Taking off the mask. And I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Nope. Any questions from the audience? Alicia, you have any questions? All right, that being said, John, you ready?
I'm ready anytime you are.
We still got to wait now for Damon to come.
Sure.
I can read a letter from Mr. P-Part. We were approached by a gentleman earlier, John Higgins, who made a concept proposal to clean the water in the duck pond, basically. And he's thanking us in this communication, thanks for doing the proof of concept demonstration of P-Part technology tools to remove algae and excess nutrients from New Breed's upper green. Excess nutrients, of course, are all the other various things that are caused for geese. I appreciate all the time and consideration given by the Board of Select and the Contamination Commission members. The cleanup demonstration will start in the spring of 2016 after ice out. We will put up a small sign to provide notice of planned work activities in the interim. We will likely access the pond to evaluate if death and sediment types, they're going to do some cores with waiters, and they're also going to go through the ice. So thank you to Jonathan B. Higgins. And we'll go forward and see how well that does go. So now that you're back, we have to, and Martha isn't here tonight.
No.
So Ellen, she left you with a little information you can help us with, right? But as I understand this, we need to, we voted on this already?
Yeah.
And we just need to sign the acceptance plan for Livingston Lane? Is there anything else beyond that?
And the deed.
And the deed.
The property over to the town.
All right, so what would you be looking for for a motion to sign? The acceptance plan and the deed for a motion?
Motion to sign the acceptance plan and the deed for Livingston Lane.
Second.
Any discussion from my board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, so you'd have to sit and learn a little. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We just did the letter.
Yep, we did the letter. So we do, did everyone read the meeting minutes?
I did.
I did, but I can't vote on them.
Oh, you weren't here?
No.
Then we'll table those for the next meeting. So I take a motion to do that?
I motion that we adjourn.
I'm-
All right. Motion to, motion to table the minutes. All right. Got to put the turkey in, right? Through the crampy side.
All right, I motion that we table the minutes until the next, the next meeting.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion to sign the warrants?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any meeting updates? Boy, you're going to move us along pretty good.
So, yeah, about 18 people come to the rescheduled coffee hour. Clearly, Alicia's tired, so I may not go through everything that we talked about. A bunch of the folks came with concerns about the town's potential purchase of the Livingston Lane property.
Oh, yeah.
And so there was a bunch of discussion about that. They asked that we look at possibly giving the right of first refusal to the Green Belt. And I think Dr. Tomfey will bring it before the board to discuss. I don't know that the Green Belt is interested, but I think, you know, at least having correspondence with them or any other-
Trustee, no.
Trustee reservations that may be interested in acquiring if certain of the property is worth doing. Was asked to, we had, the board unanimously in the past asked, send a letter to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission about closing down the secret power plant. That issue was brought back before us again, or before me at this meeting.
Does anyone know that the management plan update to the secret power plant was accepted by the NRC?
I believe it was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Well, you know that it was-
I'm not sure. All right.
But he brought the previous letter that the board had sent, which had been signed and voted unanimously. And said that most of the surrounding communities have also asked for it. And there have been some studies done on concrete independently saying that it's really not in good shape. So he had a lot of information with that. He said he was going to pass along, but he didn't want to give up the whole coffee hour, which I very much appreciate. There was a lot of discussion about the beach, Al was there. There was an idea that we also talked a lot about how to try and re-bring the community back together rather than having ideas of the three separate communities. No resolution, but it was talked about as something that's very important to get the sense of New Breed as a whole town rather than the disparate little sections and parts that always vote their own interests. We did some discussion of how the town free cash actually works just to educate people.
Good, glad you did it.
This is what I have to refer to in a couple of weeks.
Now, when are you, when are you going to do the number?
December 5th, Berlin.
Yep, one of the other things that was actually brought up about, people really were pleased about the coffee hour. You need to be calm about stuff.
Oh, it's just now.
It lasted about two and a half hours. That was just-
It was lively.
And one of the thoughts that came up, actually part of it, was maybe we should do one over the library, one over Pittah Hall, also that's closer to people. I don't know if we want to do that or not, but it was mentioned as an idea. And yeah, Al had brought up the Australian battling again. Kathy's voicemail is still deciphering to answering.
Yeah, it is.
And then she, there was a complaint that- And, and then she, there was a complaint that in the run-up to the last election, the, the Newbury channel was just inundation of...
Public service announcements?
About, about the, it was, she said it was just the fire station and the police station. Fire station, police station, she was very upset about this. I don't have a TV that's connected or anything, so I couldn't speak to it, but I can see it being, if you're trying to watch meetings or things like that, the other pieces of the programming that we're supposed to provide. So, that about wraps up the...
Yeah.
Now, one thing we've got to be careful on when we have these, is just the thoughts, just the side, that it's real easy to speak for the board.
Oh, yeah, you can't speak for the board.
I didn't...
But I know, but I mean, I have to remind myself, you know, when it's my turn, so you really got to try to remember that.
I think Damon had to point out, I can bring this off to the board.
Yeah, what I viewed it as, is trying to get people to give me their input rather than answering questions or defending decisions that we've made or anything like that. Just get people to talk to us so that we know what's on people's minds. And then, you know, we can discuss it in this public forum. But I didn't, you know, in part, keeping what you said about being careful not to speak for the board, you know, I did try to alleviate people's concerns that, that boards in town are arrogant and are speaking down to them. And explain that, you know, I think the reason that happens is we attend a lot of meetings, we've gone over a lot of these questions over and over and over and over and over again. I think that I am. And so that may be where some of that perception of arrogance comes from, because I know, you know, I work with all these people on these boards a lot, and I know that none of them are, are trying to speak down to people. So I didn't, in that one instance, I was like, I don't think that's an accurate perception of the selectmen, the income, the building committee, you know. I don't think anyone's trying to speak down to the townspeople. I think much the opposite, but I think you're right, it's something we have to be careful of.
I mean, one thing is, we've made, you know, this board, it's all you guys together and everything else, but we have made this as open as possible to work in a closet and as much with free information flow with the finance committee, the building committee, and on and on. This capital plan, we've, we've really tried to, you know, have a free flow of information, probably more than at any other time, because I've, I've been the selectman for a while, so. Anything else?
I think that, that covers it.
Executive session, and then Alicia.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, please, again?
No, we did this backwards today.
I promised that I wasn't going to forget you. You can adjourn now.
No, I'll wait.
We have... Hey, Tyler, read it this week, read this week, boy.
Tyler, read this week, okay?
Please, boy. Very briefly, I received a nice letter of thanks from Brian Bojett and Superintendent Farmer, thanking the folks from the Newbury Fire Department for responding for the second time in as many months to the elementary school and assisting them and allowing, allowing them to keep the building open during a water break. So they were very appreciative, appreciative of all the help that they provided. So I just wanted to pass that on to you.
Why is that water break?
I can't answer that question. I'm asking a break for a question. The consulate, the agent director Marty Joe and I met with four potential candidates for the director's position. We evaluated all their qualifications and hoped to be making an offer by the end of this week so that we could have someone work with Marty for a couple of weeks during the transition. We received notification today from Maya that we received a $5,000 grant to purchase a trench box for the DPW department. They have to spend operating without one, which is pretty shocking.
Safe cadence when someone's down in a trench. It's a big metal box and sits in...
Well, it's kind of an important piece.
I agree, yeah, it is.
So, that will be coming soon. The police department was also awarded a 911 incentive grant in the amount of $19,000 for their dispatch communications center software, and it allows them to pay for wages for personnel as well. That's more great news.
That's good.
The sewer project is complete, the connections have been made, and it is functioning properly. That is going, yep. The initial appropriation for that project was $500,000. We did not spend the entire appropriation, there's a balance of over $154,000 that will revert back to free cash, so that's good news as well. And the trailers, the countdown on the trailers, we all know is seven months. Just want to keep that on your radar because it will be a very quick closure of those trailers. So we've got to start putting a plan in place very soon.
Doing drawings as a help earlier?
Yes. We're having, we're engaged in many discussions about possible solutions, but...
So, one thing is July 1st.
First.
July 1st, the trailers have to go.
They will be removed.
And it's hard for anyone to actually realize that, but I guess the trailers have to go. That means it's the beginning of the outlay of expenses by having to find places to rent to put people in.
We're going to have to rent, because even if we come up with a decision...
My understanding was that if we, at the April meeting, approved the construction of a new building, the trailers at that point could stay because we've made progress. That's no longer the case.
That is not the case. If we had received approval at the past April town meeting, we would, we were possibly going to fail when edutain, I believe it was a six-month extension.
Yeah, eight months.
So that's already, that's off the table.
Okay, I hadn't understood that.
The, the other thing that we have to be concerned about is there's no appropriation for office rental space, which can be quite expensive, so I would be petitioning finance committee for emergency reserve fund transfers. We also have to go out to a competitive bid process to lease property. So it's, it's a lengthy process, not to mention, you know, moving all the IT and purchasing additional photocopiers and phone systems and everything, so...
For people that don't know, we have some IT in that for the trailer, right?
Yes, we do, yes, we do. And just bring to your attention again, the records are deteriorating. The town records. The most valuable town records are in here in a climate controlled halt, but there are many other permanent town records that have already, we've already lost, and there are others that we are losing, so, you know, I just want you to be aware of these issues. Continue to be aware of them, I know you're already aware of them.
We have to fix this problem.
Yeah, if a private, can they be stored privately? Like if a resident said, I have a, a room which my kid no longer uses, you know, is that plausible? Just to get them out so that it stops rotting, that we can find a place for them?
I don't know the answer to that question. I've, I've never researched that, but I certainly can.
I mean, just rather than risk being sued for losing documents?
Well, they're town documents.
I know.
They really don't belong in a private home.
Absolutely, but we don't have any spot to put them, right?
No, what we can rent.
We do own the inspectional services trailer, we do own that, so...
What's that, what's like to buy that?
If we climate, if we kept that climate controlled and could at least move them over there. I mean, right now, if you go over there with the cold evenings and the warm days and you open it, it's raining. Now, we did box up a lot of them in hard plastic containers, but there are many file cabinets and additional things that just don't have that type of protection, so...
And I bet the mice are having a field race.
I do not know the answer to that question.
Shoot, don't ask the board.
No, I've got a lawyer.
So... I'm not quite sure, I, I have a couple of questions, but I'm not quite sure how, is it possible for the Board of Selecting to have a working, set, working group meeting so that we can, unless I have you and the chief, and the other chief, and that has an department?
Only if two of you are in attendance. Otherwise, you have to post a...
Otherwise, it's a meeting.
Okay. To try to narrow out some of these solutions? What do you have, I'm just throwing it out there.
Solution...
Space, to start looking at the space problem.
Well, we need, we can't, listen, these trailers are gone. And if we wait until, it's already Thanksgiving, Christmas, the first of the year, we need to have a plan because it's not going to be quick to do, to do this.
To move into the trailers, we have, took three months?
Took...
One or three months.
We're going to get crack-a-lackin' on this. And I would like to see the police department completely moved out of that facility and rent someplace else for them, because even though the sewer has still been addressed, it's still molding, and it's still gross down there. So I have, I have full support of moving the police department completely out of the basement of this building, rent them space someplace else.
We can talk about options as we're discussing them, I can bring alternatives to the board.
So that's the way I feel, but I don't, I don't, time is of the essence, I really believe that.
I do too.
So, and the other question I have was, as far as the superintendent of school's search goes, does this, has the town ever been asked to put somebody on that search committee?
I have not been asked to date.
Okay.
I haven't received a request.
I've already had some people personally maybe want to know what was going on, but...
I can follow up with Brian a little more.
Yeah.
Because I don't know, I didn't, because I have a daughter at high school, I still get emails. I don't know exactly what the position the three towns are going to have on this, but I know it's going to be something. I have a feeling, I have an inkling it's going to be something.
Okay, I can find out. The only other thing I wanted to mention is Christmas and the New Year's holiday fall on a weekend. So December 24th and December 31st will be the observed holidays, so town hall will be closed on both of those days.
Isn't it on Friday, is the Christmas fall on Friday?
Is it Friday? They could, I don't want to have that Friday, they don't work on Fridays, so they get off Christmas holiday.
Yeah.
It's the New Year's Day holiday.
Friday?
It is a Friday, isn't it?
Friday, so we'll be observing it on Thursday.
The 24th.
Are you done, Tracy?
Yes.
Everyone's cut, Tracy.
I tried to make it short, it was very...
We still love you, I'm a Tracy.
Oh, I didn't...
Because it wasn't done properly, Livingston Lane, we need to read the motion that was...
Is that what you, like, made in big yellow for me to do?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, and take a bubble vote.
I move that the selectmen on behalf of the town of Newbury accept the conveyance of the street known as Livingston Lane located in Newbury, Essex County, Massachusetts, as shown on the plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan Livingston Lane, Newbury, Mass. dated February 20th, 2015, prepared by Hiz Enginary Inc., as authorized by both under Article 15 of Newbury Special Town Meeting held on October 22, 2015, and signed the Street Acceptance Plan.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion to adjourn. Can I have a second, please?
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.